Well, good evening, welcome. Thank you for coming this evening. Need to remember to unmute myself here. So, good evening and thank you for coming. Welcome. We will start on time, 5:15, and we will run to 6 o'clock. Because I know, if you're like me, I'm looking forward to some dinner and relaxing. Last night was a, not as late as usual, but it was a fun night at council. So, again, thank you for coming. Our objective this evening, or my objective this evening, is to really get a lot of questions answered. So, I'm not going to give a long talk, thankfully. I've been talking all day, but I would like to make sure we address as many questions as we can. So, we'll start with those in the room. Christine is going to assist me if anybody posts a question from the Zoom connection that we have. Right now, I don't have anybody online from Zoom. But if some join, Christine will let them in. We know it's working because we're both connected and we use the reports. Good evening. But again, let's get started with some of the questions that I know people have been asking. They've been reading Facebook posts. They've been hearing partial stories, maybe, in the newspaper. You know, there's only so much print room. City council meetings can get very confusing and long. You don't want to sit there all night and listen to those. But I'd like to focus the questions around the campaign, if we could, and not just general city council questions. If you're asking about a position I might have on an issue, that's fine, but I don't want to get into strictly city council issues.
Yeah.
Right? Mark? So, good. Thanks, Kim.
So, In-N-Out Burger. Can we, where did the information come from? And, you know, what is your response to that?
Thank you for asking that question. Everybody wants good information, and people appreciate getting good information as quick as possible. And over the last year, we've been struggling with COVID, and the information has not been so positive at times. And in April, I received a phone call from the developer of that area, and they said, "You know, Don, we have something really positive that's starting to happen in your ward." Now, I meet with business people regularly throughout the city, and I've been, for the last six years, really paying close attention, of course, to Ward 4. So, the developer individual called me and said, "Here's what's..." It's okay. Got a little noise here. That's okay. "Here's what's going on. In-N-Out Burger has been interested in Northern Colorado for some time, and in Colorado in general. And they are close to filing the paperwork to begin the process of gaining approval to open a location in Loveland." So, back to the In-N-Out. It was, I said, "Can I share that information?" And he says, "Absolutely. Once the paperwork has been filed with the planning commission, they start their, or the planning city staff, start their process." It's public information. So, validate or verify the paperwork has been filed, and you have our permission to release that information. We have a group walking in, so this is pleasant surprise.
It's all Loveland.
Yeah, I know it. This is the future. This is great. The future Loveland just walked in, and we're talking about In-N-Out Burger. What more could we do? So, thank you all for coming. So, anyway, so I made a phone call to the city department, validated, planning department validated, and they showed me the document. I then knew where the location was, which was Mitzi's. And I went home later that evening or the next day, and I put up a Facebook post. "Good news. In-N-Out and City working to make it happen." Something to that effect. That wasn't even the exact wording. But it's good news in a time of down news. I never knew how, what a response it would achieve. Over 118,000 hits on a Facebook page. I'm used to like 3,000 or something. The interest was great. And of course, there's issues that have to be worked out in traffic, like in any planning situation. But the developer gave me permission. In-N-Out did an interview later that evening with the city reporter who wrote a story on it, and they're very excited about coming here. They just have to work out some traffic issues like any retail establishment would. So, that's working through the process. We'll see where it ends up. But thanks for bringing it up. No one else yet asked me where I got that information from, so I'm glad someone did. I got it from the developer himself.
Public knowledge now.
Correct.
I mean, it absolutely was public knowledge when you commented on it.
Yeah. There was no violation of law in that release. I was just doing my job and communicating with residents and trying to bring positive news to the city as we were working through the COVID.
When do you think we'll hear something?
You know, I really don't have a good idea on that. It takes time, and they go back and forth. But there's a commitment. They want to, but they want to make it happen, so it's just a matter of working out traffic and issues like that. That would be great.
Best thing Burger has done.
Well, I think the city would like to make it happen as well, because that's quite a draw for the city, right off of I-25. So, I've only eaten a one In-N-Out in my life, and that was late at night, so I guess it's really a popular place. So, great. Good. Thank you. Yes, sir?
Kevin, Ward 3. I was watching a city council meeting, and there was a complaint about why the city is campaigning for you. Could you explain that complaint? Is the city campaigning for you?
Well, good question. I wish it was true, but it's not. It would be great. But when we have a meeting like this, any city councillor, and they anticipate two or three, excuse me, three or more city councillors in the room, and we're going to be talking about city business, could be fire station, it could be a tax plan, anything of that nature, we're required under Sunshine Law to notify the city, and the city then must comply and have that information posted for all to see. This evening, we actually, well, we are in a meeting that would require posting because we have three-plus city councillors in the room. So, I'm required to post that, the city, or to advise the city. The city's required to advise all the citizens, "Hey, there's a meeting, and it's Don's meeting, but he might have three city councillors there." The idea is, you don't want back-room meetings and all those things that happened where I lived in Chicago to occur here in Loveland, so we avoid that. And so, that's the issue on that. They were just complying with the law. The city attorney addressed that last night in the city council meeting, so thanks for watching the meeting and noticing that. He addressed it very clearly. It'd be easier if I didn't have to, because I might forget, whatever, but it's a regular practice all of us follow. Yes, sir?
I've got a couple of questions. About the city council not taking phone calls and emails, is that because the meeting runs too long, or...
Well, the city council process, they establish, we establish our own rules. And for decades, city council comments, citizen comments were welcome at city council meetings. And every city handles this communication process a little differently. But they would set time limits of 30 minutes, or, and only so much time per person, things of that nature. Our practice has been, since I've been on council for six years now, is to citizens have three minutes to come to council, three minutes to make their statement, and they can come every week, or every week that we're taking. You know, we have comments in regular meetings, and normally on study sessions, we don't, we just get down to business. When COVID occurred, it disrupted our regular meeting process. We started meeting by Zoom, so people couldn't come, so we opened up meetings, email and phone calls. And with the restrictions now off, and we're back meeting in council chambers, we reverted back to our prior existing practices of taking citizen comment live. Citizens are encouraged to email us all week long. We get emails every single day, and someone always responds. We kind of determine who's responding, but, or all of us respond, but we respond to that. We also take phone calls all week long. Our information is posted. So, in order to accomplish and get work done at council, because we were falling way behind with the work that has to get done, especially now that we're into the budget time of the year. There's a lot of work that staff and council puts in on budget. We reverted back to our existing or our prior practices. And we might change our rules going forward. We're having some discussions about overall council rules, which we do generally yearly, and we might make some adjustments to those rules. But we went back to our practice, which is actually, in comparison to a number of cities, we've surveyed other cities. Our city clerk has done that work. We're very generous with our time.
I've got one more question.
That'd be great.
What is your position on giving incentives to businesses that are moving into the area, like these million-dollar tax incentives to bring a corporation or something in? Were you for that, or...
Well, you know, that is a question we should probably spend an entire session on, and I'm happy to do that. In 2017, I was part of a stakeholder group of, I was a new councillor at that time. I was in my, I think it was 2016 we started meeting. And we had a stakeholder group around 25 individuals in the city. Citizens, council members, staff. I served on that with the former mayor, Cesar Gutierrez. And we developed an economic development strategy as well as incentive policy that would, staff could then work from. So, when you know the rules and they're fair for everybody, we could work together. So, we were in a consistent process. So, that's a long discussion, but generally what the city department will do on economic development, they have guidelines, and they're looking for return on investment. They're looking for ability to enhance the city. In other words, they will look at services that aren't existing in the city. They will look specifically at small businesses, which most of our businesses are. They will look at job-creating businesses, like primary employers, because they bring and grow your economic pie. They bring money into the community because they do their business outside primarily of your community. So, they have a policy and a plan. Matter of fact, last December, it was November or December, I requested, and the council supported, that we direct the economic development director to revisit the economic strategic plan as well as the incentive policy in light of COVID and where we're at. And even though that plan is good for five years, 2017 to 2022 would be five, we asked to move up the timetable and revisit that and bring that back to council before the end of the year, so we could take a look at it. So, you know, we have to look at ways, we lose about 15% of the jobs in the city a year. 10 to 15% is what normally happens in cities. So, you need to replace that, but you also want to make sure you're attracting jobs that have a future.
Okay. What about the housing part of it? Like the apartments and stuff that went over by Centerra? Did we give that? I think it's Keenan, or, I can't remember the name.
Can you describe? Did you hear the question? He's wondering about, restate it, maybe I can understand it better.
Well, that was, I understood that we gave a big incentive to one of the builders, and they were building apartments over by Centerra.
No, there were no incentives, the cities. If the city's going to do an incentive of some sort, we do fee waivers for affordable housing. For instance, we work very closely with Loveland Housing Authority and Loveland Habitat for Humanity. Those are the two primary developers or people that build housing, affordable housing, generally for people at 30 to 60% of median income in the county, which is around $65,000. We work with them, often grant fee waivers, and we'll backfill those. City will actually contribute so to reduce the cost of those projects. That occurred over by the Edge, which is off of 15th Street and Boyd Avenue, behind where the veterinarian is, south of the ditch. Then the other thing the city might do with housing, well, that's about it, what we do with housing.
I had my phone in for a minute.
Yeah, that's okay. Listen, it's a lot going on. Gets confusing. Good. Anyone else? Thank you. Yes, sir?
Okay. What was the inspiration for the theme "Unite Loveland," and how do you see that carrying forward?
Oh, great. I was hoping that would come up, because it's drawn some attention. You know, they say when your critics come after you, you must be over the target. And I think that theme is, we are definitely over the target. But stop and think about it. Who doesn't want to live in a city that's united and rowing in the same direction? Who doesn't want to work in a city that we might, we're heading in the same, we might get there a little differently. Some of us walk on the left side of the street, and some walk on the right side of the street, but we're heading in the same direction. We're going to arrive there. Who want, who would not want to be involved in a process where you can enhance and help the city grow in a smart way, to meet the needs of the citizens? And that campaign theme actually came from my campaign lunch table group. There were around 35 individuals in that group. We've been meeting since early this year on a regular basis, talking, identifying issues that we believe are important to the city, and it's made up of citizens like you. These are people that believe that a candidate that believes in uniting Loveland, a candidate that looks to unite and drive things forward, get things done, as you mentioned, accomplish what we need to accomplish in meetings, but move the city forward in a smart way, would be a wise thing. And that theme came out of that group and discussion. So, I didn't create it. I wish I had. I think it's really good. I can ask my videographer and people to put it up on pages, but that came from citizens, and I really appreciate the fact that they did that. Yes, sir?
I'd like to follow that question up with a question, because some on council or some of critics would say that at times during council session, the fighting and the bickering on city council. So, we all make mistakes. Is there any areas that you want to improve in your own life to help unite Loveland at the dice with other councils?
Right. You know, thank you. That's a tough question, because I have to admit something. I'm not perfect. I do training and executive coaching and organizational development for a living. I'm really good at work. But when I get in a city council meeting, I'm just like the rest of us. Sometimes somebody pushes a button, and sometimes debating issues, which is great. There's nothing wrong with debating issues. But sometimes we get a little emotionally involved, and that usually leads to trouble. Anybody ever get in trouble at home for, "Why did I say that?" And the only way to get out of it is to say, "Honey, after 47 years of marriage, I'm sorry once again." Now, I have been working really hard at proving not getting emotionally involved, following my own advice that I give clients every single day. And so, I write statements out. I think things through. I talk to people in advance. I try to make sure I'm connecting with citizens and other councillors to make that happen. But it's a process we all need to work on. To really get good at that, we need to remember to focus, focus on the issue and respect the person. We can disagree. There's been a number of councillors over the years that I've worked with that we have never voted for the same senator or presidential candidate, and we probably never will. But when it comes to working in Loveland, we have worked very well together. We have had very few words of disagreement, opposing views, but we've, we're on the same page, and that comes back to intentions. We trust each other, because our intentions are, how do we solve this problem? We're going to look at it differently, but how do we solve this problem, respecting each other's positions and avoiding drawing in personalities? And when that happens, disaster happens. Lastly, I'm responsible for my behavior. I'll own it. I'll make a mistake, I'll apologize. It's not uncommon at the end of a council meeting for two or three of us to walk up to each other and say, "Hey, Rich, I'm really sorry. I was a little, little too direct in that question." And somebody like Rich might say, "Well, I was too, and it's all good. Let's move on." But that's the way we think we need to do it. It comes down with trusting each other. So, we got, we have to work on that, but it starts with us. Yes, John?
Don, on that, something that's helped me, I'm always reminding myself, is, address the issue, don't attack the individual.
Very, very true.
If it's an issue that's always attached to an individual, it's very tempting to attack the individual. But attack, you know, address the issue, don't attack the individual.
Right. And for the most part, people really do try to do that. It's only been recently, in the last couple of years, that it's been more difficult. So, anyway, I own it, working on it. I build teams all the time in organizations, walk into companies that are struggling with those communication issues, and we get it heading in the right direction. And I believe we can do that in Loveland as well.
So, Don, as a follow-up, I think, you know, there have been a lot of 8-1, 7-2, 6-3 votes on council.
Mm-hmm.
So, maybe you can address that?
Well...
And how you, you know, been on that, you know, bipartisan kind of...
Yeah. Council's really made up of nine different individuals, and we operate as a body. It shouldn't be operating as individuals, because then all of a sudden, it's kind of like a basketball team. You know, the star that wants to score the three-point shots all the time, but the team loses? I mean, I experienced that in Chicago, and then we finally had some winning years there for a while. But that's evidence sometimes of that not happening, working. But here's more importantly. I'm not sure if 8-1 or 5-4 is the best ratio. I'm not sure. I think what's important is that to govern a city of 80,000 people and your nine people, if I agree, if I am only going to support what I agree with 100%, and if it doesn't meet my terms 100%, I'm not going to go for it. Well, that's impractical. It just isn't the way life works. You have to work with one another, and you learn from one another. And hopefully, you can get to, I think 8-1 votes are great. That means eight of us reached a consensus that for this particular issue, we believe this is the best possible solution at this point in time. That doesn't mean 10 years from now, we change our mind. It doesn't mean, maybe, we were wrong. But it shows that eight people in that scenario worked together, both sides, and they reached a solution that they believe is workable, and their intentions are, what is best for the citizens that we're representing. So, 5 to 4 is a little harder to explain, because that means we're not working hard enough, maybe. We're not giving enough. We're not looking at things wide enough to be able to really build a stronger consensus. Sometimes you have to go with 5-4. But I think when you can have 7-2, 8-1, it shows the majority are working together, and you can question why others are usually the outlier, but I commend the council, really. Over the last, the six years I've been on, we've had a lot of 7-2, 8-1, 9-0 votes. Lately, it's been, you know, a little more contentious, but I think it's working overall. I think we've made some really good decisions for the city. I really do. And by the way, the other comment, I didn't want to forget, ties into that. I find myself in the majority probably 95% of the time. I might start out like broadband where I'm not in favor of something at all, and after two years of studying and work, I find myself in the majority. And I think that comes because I'm putting my bias aside, learning, admitting, willing to admit. I didn't, my initial reaction wasn't correct. I needed to rethink that and taking time to come to decisions. So, I think for the most part, council's doing fine on that, for the most part. Yes, ma'am?
So, I'm Anna Bradbury, and I just was curious, because this was one of your ideas, was to put together this trust commission, and I was curious to see where that is at this point, as far as are you gathering people that are interested and contacting them, or just curious on an update?
Well, great. Thank you. We just, and it is time for an update, because it's been, I think, two or three weeks, and we were trying to get it passed earlier, but it just took us a while. We had a meeting yesterday, and that meeting yesterday with the steering group, which would be the mayor, myself, and the city manager at this point, and support staff, we're looking to bring on a facilitator, a professional consultant, that can work with us, in particular the mayor and I, in establishing the criteria for citizen participation, as well as the process. We're looking for 16 citizens. So, once we have the facilitator, we're going to be meeting before the end of the month and starting, doing interviews. We agreed on a handful we would like to interview. Soon as we can appoint that facilitator, then, because the mayor and I need some facilitation help. And by bringing in somebody in the pet and a professional, that's what I do for a job, so it's kind of frustrating. I got to hire, it's like a doctor, hiring a doctor, but we need that this time. We'll start establishing that criteria, because we'd like to have that up and running with citizens on it, meaning interviewing in August and staffed and ready to go in September.
How will that be advertised, as far as who might want to apply for that particular...
Good. How might that be advertised? Every way we can. I'm sure the newspaper has been, the newspaper has been very cooperative with, I believe, the city. They're doing, I mean, it's much different than a few years ago, so I really feel pleased about the reporting coverage we get. They will promote it. The city will promote it in the website. We'll promote it through our communications department. And we will certainly, I can promise you, I will put it up on Facebook and LinkedIn every way I can to communicate. Here's how you find out. Please volunteer. Yes, Beth?
I don't want to be a party pooper here, but we've been going through a rather contentious time lately, and I don't want to see that on the committee we were just talking about. And I don't know how you can avoid it, but to get certain personalities that come in, and they're hateful, and they're accusing you, and I think that would be a big mistake. So, how will you try to deal with that?
Well, the question was, how do you control the selection process so we have citizens involved who really want to make a difference and not just score points?
Beth, you said it earlier than I did.
Oh, that's okay. Thank you, Beth, for the question. Beth happens to serve on one of our commissions, a longtime serving member, and that works pretty well, doesn't it? That process?
It's been wonderful for us. We have a really good group.
We have...
And you need a good group with this, you need people who will come in, analyze situations, and not prejudge.
And that's exactly why we're going to establish the criteria, and it's like you've got to live in Loveland or something like that. It's going to be open to all citizens, or maybe areas contingent to Loveland. We have some enclaves here, but they're really part of Loveland. We have to work through those details, but it'd be very much like our other 25-plus boards and commissions that we have in the selection process. But since it's a new commission, we can't go to the normal people that do the interviewing for this, but we came up with the same number. Three people will do the interviewing and make recommendations to council for approval. So, council still will have some oversight on approval of that, just like boards and commissions. So, it's not that much different of a process.
Do you well consider the hostility angle of this?
Well, I think in any board or commission, you want people on, participating that you want to work with. You want to, you know, working with agitation, disagreement's fine, but working with disruptors or people that just like to agitate, that certainly, you know, if you have a history of that, the commission might decide that you might not be a good fit, because this group's going to have to really work well together, because the past will be taken care of by then. I'm fully confident. The past that we're dealing with right now will be resolved, for the most part, by then. I certainly hope so. I'm concerned about moving forward. And when I can put up an article, for instance, in the newspaper, and immediately on Facebook, it's attacked and criticized, and it's not even accurate information they're criticizing, that shows a real lack of trust between a citizen and a leader. And that's not good for a community. It's okay to disagree, but I think, I think we have three areas that we need to establish trust. Trust has to exhibit, work within this triangle. That triangle is citizens, city council, and city staff. If there's breakdowns of trust between any three parts of that triangle, your triangle ceases to function. It falls apart. City council needs to trust city staff. City staff needs to trust citizens. Citizens need to trust city staff. Citizens need to trust city council. It goes all the way around. It's got to be connected. And I think we have communication issues in particular, and some other challenges that we can work on that would improve over the, over time to keep those channels clear and open and establish trust, but stronger trust. That, by the way, is a topic that I teach on throughout the nation, state of Colorado. So, it's something I'm, I'm close to, and I realize how important it is. So, that's why my, that's why that commitment came there. Thank you for the question. I'm going to shorten the answers up. I'm sorry. I know I get going. So, anything else? Yes, sir?
Yeah. This is a, just a curiosity of mine. How does the chief of police in Loveland get chosen and appointed to be the mayor or the council? How does that work?
Okay. There's, that's a really good question. How do we select employees in the city? First of all, the city council is responsible... First of all, the city council is responsible for just three employees in the city. And I'm, used to being a CEO of hundreds of people, so this really frustrates me. I only got three people. On top of that, nine of us manage three people. We must operate as a body. Or that poor person is going to go, can you imagine nine bosses? Yeah, who'd want that job? It's like being the superintendent of the schools. But, so the city, the city manager, the city attorney, and the municipal judge are hired by the city council, by a majority of the city council. The city manager then hires and manages his staff. And the chief of police is a department direct report to the city manager. And then, it's like in the corporation, then the police chief has an entire management structure underneath him with about 150 individuals he's responsible for, or his management team. So the city manager would hire that position. He would, of course, interview with a number of us so the city manager could make the decision. But it's his decision to hire and fire the vast majority of our employees.
The reason I ask that question is you have cities like Portland and Seattle and maybe San Francisco where the chief of police is at the behest of a politician that has an agenda that tells the chief of police building for certain law enforcement.
Well, I came from Chicago, and that's called a strong mayor city. Denver is a strong mayor city. Those are politicians and the city's being run by that. We have a strong city manager city, like Fort Collins, where city council will hire a professional to manage the city. And they generally have a great deal of experience. The city manager we have now, I think, had 17 years of experience with the city before being promoted into the city manager position. So we operate differently in that light, and a lot of cities do. And when you get big like Chicago or Denver, and of course, we see the condition they're in many times. I like our system quite well.
I'd like to add something to that. When we have a vacancy for police chief, like when Luke Hager left, we get applications from all over the United States. And you have multiple candidates and they go through a screening process. Then what happened with Chief Tyson is there's, oh, there had to have been at least 100 people from the city and citizens and police officers and advisory boards. They came from all over the city and it was a whole day. And these final candidates, there might have been eight of them or something, I can't remember. But anyway, they go around and there's a small room and there'd be like maybe eight or 10 people in every room. And then the candidates go around from room to room and you ask them questions and you interview them on their policies and their beliefs. So it's, it's not, I mean, yes, John.
It's a very rigorous process. I think it was what Beth's trying to add to that.
Yeah, the city manager does probably make the final decision. But it is a huge effort for something like that, and it is very time-consuming.
Good, thank you Beth. Thank you, yes.
Lori, Ward Three, numbers questions. First of all, did the city of Loveland receive COVID funds? Did they receive any money for COVID relief or anything like that?
The city of Loveland has participated and benefited from two, from the CARES Act and the Rescue America, Rescue America Act under the current president. And we're just in the process of receiving some funds. And they've all been under different restrictions and different processes, but funds were received by the city.
And where is that going to be going to?
It's specified by, yeah, the question is where do those, how those funds get expended? It's defined when the grant is made, it's considered a grant. There's stipulations of how that money can be used and how it cannot be used. So we follow those guidelines. We're actually still working through that process on this. The first process was very easy, what we received last year. This current American Rescue Act, it's been more complicated and confusing for the city to determine what do they mean by how it can be used. So there's a lot of back and forth going on, getting clarification. But that, that was discussed in a budget meeting in the past. And I can get more specific information on that if you'd like. I just, council is fully informed of those decisions and how those decisions were made.
And I know you're independently wealthy.
Absolutely.
You are totally funding your, I've always heard the saying that if you want to find an answer to a question, you don't go by the rumors, you go to the horse and you ask the horse. So not to call you a horse.
That's a compliment some days, you know? It's part, which part of the horse are you asking about, I guess, is the question?
I want to talk to the base.
You stepped in that one, ma'am. Lori?
Why was your campaign being funded?
It's being funded by citizens. Candidates running for city council in the city of Loveland are allowed to accept a maximum of $130 per person. Now, I can help you with that tonight if you'd like. But that is the maximum of money I can accept. So you could give me 130 to the campaign, and your husband could. You cannot give me 200. $130 is all, we all operate under that. That's why fundraising, it is important. If I could write, if someone could write me a check for 10,000, that'd be great. But they're not allowed to do that. I can only collect and retain $130 per person. And currently, we're approaching 200 supporters, real close. And the goal is a lot more than that. Because when people make a support of $5, or $20, or 130, they've made a decision. They believe in you, they're trust, entrusting you with something that's precious to them. It's not the amount of money. I have one individual that's sending me $25 a month. And once he hits his limit, because that's how he can afford it. That's humbling when somebody says, this is all I can give you this month, but I'll be there next month. And every month he's there. That means a lot. So we raise it individually and then have to report every expense.
And what's the dollar amount? Because I know for like, county commissioner like say, if it's under a certain dollar amount, that they, your name does not have to be listed, but I know the campaign has to track the individual. But what's the magic number?
Yeah, we'll be releasing, as required by law, campaign finance reports. And you must list everyone who donates $20 or more, including their occupation or retired, and collect the basic information. Actually, if you go to my website, hit the donate button, you'll see the form that has to be collected, connected, or filled out. And once you fill in that form completely, then I can accept that form. And on envelopes and checks, that same information is there. So we literally report, most everybody gets $20 or more, report everything.
$19.99 is the magic number.
Yeah, $19.99. But only once can you do that. You exceed 19.99, I need to know who you work for. That's the law. One last, and then this gentleman, so I'm watching her time.
Was there some talk about reducing the number of councillors on city council? What is your position on that?
Well, there's been some discussion by one individual on council who would like to change the charter in a number of ways. We're operating under the current charter that was passed in 1996. We became a home-rude city, I think, in the same year, or maybe a couple of years earlier, 1994. Only Mr. Clark is old enough to remember all that for me. Thank you, Dave, for being here tonight. So, and full disclosure, Davis, the city councillor from Ward Four, we worked very closely together, representing our ward and been doing so for the six years I've been on council. I, you know, I think the current system of nine on council, eight city councillors, two from each ward, is working quite well. I don't know what I would do if I didn't have Dave to cover for me when I'm gone, out of town, because the ward would be unrepresented. I'm on vacation, I'll let Dave know, hey, I'm going to be gone, you know, can you, and he'll do the same with me weekends. Because if I get a call from a citizen, I'm going to let him know what that call was about, or a business. So when they speak to one of us, they're speaking to both. If we reduce that number in a city that's expanding and growing, I'm not sure how well that will work. I like the number. If anything, we might have to add a ward in the future because of the growth of the city. Growth is inevitable. We have land, people want to live here. They have a right, just like we did. I moved here from the Midwest and I love it. So we might have to expand that number, not really reduce it, or expand our areas. But nine seems to work well. You get a good mix of ideas with nine people. Good mix of ideas, a lot of diversity. And it really makes it, you really learn a lot when you work with eight other people. So thank you. Yes, sir?
Yeah, I, two things. I wanted to clarify that because you mentioned that citizens can donate up to a certain, or contribute up to a certain dollar mark. But what about big donors? What about businesses? Do they follow under the same guidelines?
$130.
Business or personal?
Well, an LLC, an LLC. Like I own an LLC called Overcash Consulting LLC. That's just how I bill, how I pay my taxes. I'm allowed to give, and LLC is considered a taxable entity. I'm allowed, I'm a tax, it can, it has a vote in donating. So, not a vote in the city, but it has, they can donate $130. Not a corporation. Yeah, no, no corporate money, no dark money, no big donors, there's no secret war chest, and there's no gold in my backyard. I quit digging. Whoever back there digging for it, it's still in California, it's not in my backyard. But everything, that's the way it operates.
Okay, so my question is a sensitive one. Recently, we had a Juneteenth celebration. You didn't make that, you weren't there. Could you explain why you were not there? And what's your position on the increase of diversity and?
Sure. Boy, that's going to be tough in 30 seconds, but I think I'll give it a whirl in a minute. It's great to have celebrations. I think it's tragic in our nation when we're removing holidays of celebrations and we forget what Memorial Day is like. And we forget what Fourth of July is about. And we forget what Thanksgiving is about. And to have a celebration that's very specifically marks officially the end of slavery in our country is a celebration day. We should celebrate that. How else do you bring people together if you can't celebrate, really, victories? Victories for human rights, for the dignity of people. The event was announced just a couple, three weeks ago, here in Loveland. And I think only one councillor was able to attend because our calendars get full. I had a personal commitment, I was hosting an event, and I made that commitment five weeks ago. So it's tough being every place that you like to be. I got the date for next year, it's on my calendar. There's no reason to not to celebrate days of victory, respecting people, respecting great events in our country. Instead of delisting some and de-emphasizing some of these days, I think we should be putting them back on the calendar, but not just in the calendar, but in our hearts where they actually mean something for us. So that's a great day, I'll look to be there next year. There'll be other events I can be at and others that I can't. And that comes back to the trust issue. People making accusations without understanding or being reasonable. You can't be every place, every time. And that's where we need to be more tolerant, trusting of one another. We start trusting or doubting other people's intentions instead of trusting their intentions, that just divides a community. I trust that you meant well by that question, thank you for asking that. Now, I could have taken the approach, he's hostile and he's trying to set me up. Well, how's that going to result in a good communication process? So I trust your intentions. Great question, thanks for bringing it up, I appreciate it. You have a chance to illustrate some of the challenges we have as a nation and in our city. Anyone else? Thank you, that was good. Yes, sir?
Are we going to have a July 4th celebration this year?
The July 4th celebration will occur this year. I read in the paper, it's the first time I heard about it as well, because there's a lot going on. It's going to be out at the ranch, at least one more year. When these decisions are made, people say, why can't we have it downtown Loveland? Well, when that decision was made, the timetable, we were still in COVID. We wouldn't be in this room together. And if we were, we'd be in masks or whatever. We probably wouldn't be here, because I don't like breathing through those very well. So I just avoided people. But that decision was made in light of the time that it had to be made. And parking and safety at that facility is a lot easier to provide our citizens than the previous location. I was told in the future they would like to bring it back downtown or down to Lake Loveland. It's great down there, it's wonderful. But we had water in the lake that time of year too, which is great, so it's fun. But it was either that or not having it. We just couldn't make a decision not knowing where we'd be on COVID, putting that many people so close together. So, good. So I think it'd be a great celebration. You can certainly see it pretty well. Yeah, we don't have, in Chicago, you had to look over trees to see it. And once you got so far, you couldn't see anything. So we got pretty good visibility out here. Anyone else? I'm in no rush. I said 6 o'clock, but everybody online, except there's one gentleman here, but everybody in this room. So if you want to leave, fine, but if I take questions, as long as you'd like.
As a follow-up, are they, you talked about if they're going to move it back to Loveland? Or are they?
They would like to, that's what I understood. Yeah, we'd have planning time next year. Councillor Clark is shaking his head. I'm glad I have cover here, with councillors filling in the blanks for me, because I don't remember everything. So that'd be great, we'll look forward to that. Also, we have the Thunderbirds that are going to be operating out of our airport for Cheyenne Days, or Frontier Days.
What's the dates?
It's around the 25th, 26th of July. Look up where Cheyenne Days are, Frontier Days. They need a runway and Cheyenne's under repair. So they, they're going to come here. So they're going to, they're going to be able to see them and take off and land and all that. And then in October, we'll have the Blue Angels. And in addition to the Blue Angels, they're going to have the Warthog. I guess that's, the plane doesn't sound good, but the enemies really don't like it. If you watch any war movies, that's the one the bad guys don't like and the good guys get real happy about. And an F-35. And the Blue Angels will be putting on an airshow out here, a two-day airshow plus training practice.
When is that, what's the date?
October, I'm chair of the Airport Commission, I can't remember all these dates. Around the 8th or 10th? It's on my Facebook page. Isn't that where everything sits nowadays?
I think the tickets go on sale in July 13.
There was, there was a public notice on that, and I can look that up and post it. And the city will continue to communicate that as well. So we got a little extra this year, that was really a great treat, little extra. And not that competition, because you got different forces now, you know, military branches. Yes, sir?
Do you have time for another question?
I will, yeah. If you're here, if you're patient, I got a few minutes more, so.
I presented a question to all of city council about a month ago because of the increase of social media and hatred, verbal abuse from followers of certain city council members. And it has increased and continues to increase. And I am involved in a lot of nonprofits that are directly related to low-income families, suicide prevention, and homelessness. And it's increasing and causing, it's helping to increase the mental, verbal mental abuse in those areas. And so I challenged all of city council members to help put a stop to the hate in Loveland. And there were several council members that refused to raise their hand in support of stopping the hate in Loveland. You raised your hand and you said that you would. So how important is it to you to help come up and work with cities and work with the city community and nonprofits to help solve these issues in our community when it comes to mental health issues, mental health struggles?
Well, you know, social media, I think there's a couple of questions in there. But when you think of the impact on social media, I just finished reading a novel. My wife and I were traveling to visit our grandson. And we couldn't visit because of COVID for all these times, and it was out in Washington State. And we listened to this novel, and it's one of my favorite authors. He's talking about, and one of the, one of the plots around it is a father was really mad because his daughter committed suicide because she was being abused on Facebook. And that started a whole, that started the whole book. What's wrong with people? Either, to attack people and have such anger and hatred that rather than resolving the issue or just deciding to, you and I aren't going to get along, so we'll just separate. But for people to get so aggressive and, and attack people, it amazes me, because people are very special. We're not dogs or cats. We're unique human beings, loved by a creator. And to attack people with the intent of destroying, I mean, it's despairing, disparaging, or destroying, they really want utter destruction of another human being. they really want utter destruction of another human being. I don't understand that. It's not acceptable. We can't make people behave. We can be responsible for ourselves, not engage in it, we can discourage it. Laws tell you not to kill people. The word kills people's souls. And when you have a situation that results in suicide, you've literally destroyed someone's soul, taken away their desire to live. I know, all of us, when attacked, it hurts. Every one of us. So why, if I know how that feels, why would I want to do that to another human being? So I don't understand the anger and the hatred in that area. I think we have to call it out. We need to put an end to it, and ourselves, we make mistakes at times, fix it, but we need to put an end to it, we need to speak to others. We can speak the truth, but do it in a manner that doesn't create more hate, but speak the truth with a bit of grace, and ask for different behavior. And don't reward the negative behavior by engaging in it, because that really fires them up. So I don't respond to a lot of comments, but I think that's an issue we all have to be involved with, all of us, individually.
I think what occurs, Don, I think there needs to be a level of, we publicly support what we privately confront. And I think what's occurring is people are bringing their differences to a public light instead of privately confronting, because we should never allow our differences to divide.
Correct.
But we should always allow our uniqueness to be in that.
Correct.
And I think differences are good, but we need to understand we privately discuss and not publicly discuss.
It all comes down from intentions. Are you trying to unite and move forward, or are you a roadblock in developing relationships? I start each day with the thought, we talk about intentions, with this thought. What can I do today to make tomorrow better for Bev? What can I do today, I've been given this day, what can I do today to make this day better for Rich? Or a nonprofit, or an organization, the business community, or whomever? If we start each day with that type of a thought process, we can make progress, because then we weren't going to go out and do what is in complete contradiction to that. And I think most people wake up each day thinking, what can I do to make a difference, to be positive influence and to unite? And we have, unfortunately, there's always individuals throughout history who would rather divide than build and bring together. That's been a challenge throughout human history. Let's be unites, let's be relationship builders, and let's make a difference for the positive. And sometimes you have to confront and fight and hold the line, but don't make it personal. Focus on the issue and try to build a relationship. So thank you for that, that was very good. Thank you. Anything else? We don't want to leave any unanswered questions.
I think you just answered it all, just now with, just trying to be civil, and yes, keep the, you know, personal attacks out of everything. And I've actually had some luck with that on the local Loveland politics page this week, because I was being personally attacked, I was called a conservative apologist.
Well, congratulations, at least you know what you might be, you know? You can decide if that's true or not. I'll touch on one thing, as an example of how we need to stay focused on issues and not make it personal. There's been some posts recently, they were upset about something I put up a couple of years ago. There was a law that was passed, it was on education, sex education, so already got a hot topic, and I thought it was very poorly written. The language in that bill, I, it's poorly, very poorly written. My opinion. Can't use mother, father, marriage, terms that, a family, that mean a lot to me. And there are other components. I didn't like the bill. It doesn't mean I don't love the people that wanted to pass that bill, or believe in that. That's not true, there's two separate issues. You fight the issue, but not the person. I was told it's not a good thing to go about making enemies. If somebody wants to make an enemy, that's her problem, I know better. You make enemies, you got problems. But, so I won't make enemies. I might have some adversaries at times, but I'm not going to make enemies. They want to be an enemy, that's their call. Focus on the issues in our community, look, respect the other individual, even if we disagree with their position or their whatever. They have a right, it's their choice. I have a right to have my opinion and my choices as well, based on my beliefs. So fight the issue, try to love the person, and I know that's really hard when you're attacked. So you hang in there.
Yeah, I have that.
Good. Anything else?
I do have one.
Okay, one more.
Recently, there was a, and I'm sure the audience is safe, recently there was a child that was sexually assaulted by a teacher, and here in our community. And I am not asking you for any information or any details, I'm not asking to speak on any of that. We don't want to jeopardize any case that is ongoing.
Right.
So I'm not asking for anything like that. But I understand that the school district and the city council or the city government are two totally separate entities, and the city does not have any control over anything that the schools are doing. Or is there a connection that after this whole thing is over, that perhaps there should be an inquiry of how could we better help the school system to strengthen it, to secure the children? Is there anything that can be done from the city council level?
Well, yeah, you know, the school board and the city council are separate, roles of responsibilities, but we're in the same community, and we do work together, and we do share information, and we do look for ways to partner, to benefit both. It'd be, if we can help with transportation issues, and we already, like we have bus routes, that'd be crazy to say, no, you got to go buy another bus, our bus is empty, but you can't use it, you know, en route. So the school board and the city work very closely together. The city, in particular, the police department, provides school resource officers, and they're not policemen in those schools, they're coaches, they're mentors, that happen to do police work when necessary. But they interface with kids in a much, in a very healthy manner, and when they have to enforce the law, they do. That came about because the school board has asked us to help them in that area, and we worked together and provided them that. Now they're paying us 50% of that cost through the school board, or the school district, but in the past, we were bearing about probably 90% of it. So there's a lot of collaboration going on between your city council and your school board, two different bodies. We need more collaboration, but there's collaboration going on there because we're all citizens of Loveland. Does that, but we have separate responsibilities. Does that work?
Yeah, I know you probably have, just as well as all city council members, I'm sure all of them have their own personal feelings right now, and they cannot speak, and so, and I appreciate that.
Well, I think anytime, anytime someone, someone is, their life is violated physically, emotionally, psychologically, you got to stop and think, what are you doing? Mistreating an individual, anyway, period. Whether it's bad customer service or something that we've seen recently where there's been, you know, attacks, physical, physical attacks. So I don't think anybody would ever support and encourage that type of behavior, obviously not. No sane person would. So it's a concern for all of us. So, and I really don't know too much about that case, other than what I could read in the paper.
Was that Long or Bertha?
That was the Bertha.
It was in Thompson School District.
The guy's in jail for a very long time, he's in jail.
Yeah.
You sent him to work a little?
Yeah.
Good. Okay, it appears as though we're done with questions? So thank you for the extra time you granted and your questions, thanks for being here. I can't tell you how encouraging it is to have smiling faces, asking sincere questions, and providing me the opportunity to respond, and not in writing. That gets so, that gets so difficult, right? I write an article for the paper, I try really hard, and you still get, I remember that song back in the 60s, please, Lord, don't let me be misunderstood. By the end, look at, I got a group here that remembers that. Yeah, we all have to work harder at that communication aspect, so thank you very much for coming tonight, thanks for your questions, thanks for your civility. It's greatly appreciated, thank you very much.
Great job. Thank you.